Okay, I think we'll go ahead and get started. So I would like to call this meeting of the Urbana City Council to order. It's Monday, November 23rd, 2020. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu? Here. Hersi? Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Colebrook?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mayor Marlin?
Here. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the November 16th, 2020 special meeting. Is there a motion for approval?
We approve of the minutes.
Move sign.
A second.
Moved by Jared, seconded by Bill Brown. Are there any additions or corrections?
That was Dennis. Or was it you, Bill?
It was.
Bill Brown.
Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hersi? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Are there any additions to the agenda? Doesn't look like it. And let the record show that Sharice Hersi has joined the meeting. Next item on the agenda is public input. I'd like to read the instructions for public input. The rules for public input are listed on each agenda for city-sponsored public meetings. Members of the public may join meetings as either a Zoom webinar or a telephone participant to make verbal input. This is a time for council members to listen to the public. Discussion, debate, or commentary won't take place during this period. Public comments are limited to four minutes per person. Public input will total no more than one hour unless shortened or extended by majority vote of the members present. The meeting chair has the option of giving priority to speakers who wish to comment on specific agenda items upon which a vote will be taken. A person may speak once during the meeting, may not cede time to another person. We ask that you address your comments to the public body as a whole, maintain respect for the process, respect for members of the council, city staff, and general public. The meeting chair or member of the public body has the authority to call a speaker out of order for using abusive, harassing, threatening, defamatory remarks. If the speaker refuses to cease the remarks, the meeting chair may mute the speaker's microphone and will ask the speaker to send the remainder of their remarks via email for inclusion in the meeting record, which closes at adjournment. And of course, if people want to participate and provide input via email, they can do that as well by emailing citycouncil@urbanaillinois.us. And the meeting record closes at the end of the meeting at adjournment. So thank you for helping us conduct respectful and productive meetings. So if you wish to speak, please raise your hand. And we'll call on Evelyn Underwood.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, Dr. Underwood.
Yes. You know, I hadn't planned to speak. I thought I had put my hands down, but I am gonna go ahead and reiterate what I talked about last week, the stops. And I think you all got that information from me. And I have talked to other people that did not get an opportunity to speak last week and who said that they, some of them sent emails to you. But many of the people that I spoke with, as I forestated, they are agreeing with me about the first step of the chief's material that he submitted. However, to be more comprehensive, they feel that the city council should really take a look at, and I told them, and I think I'm correct, that Mr. Darryl Cruz did send the information to the city council. Is that true? I mean, I know it's true, he wouldn't lie. But did you guys get the information that he sent, the resolution?
Yes.
Okay. To the city council. And I had sent materials to the people that I spoke with, and they were in agreement that it would really be more comprehensive. And it could, the chief's material could be a subset of what he's, Mr. Darryl Cruz had submitted to the council. And they feel it's more comprehensive. Now, I said, well, if you didn't get to the city council, it's not like it used to be with just COVID-19. I don't know if it would be better for us to maybe get maybe 100, 200, or 300 petitions, you know, sign petitions saying that they want this. Maybe that would be better because we can't come to a meeting. And with everything that's going on with COVID-19, people are fearful of getting, you know, but I go door-to-door, you know, and get signatures from the people who feel that we should look at this. Because with what I understand, people are not running for city council. We're gonna have new city council people. They're gonna have to have time to get up to speed on what's going on. And without that continuity, it's gonna take more time. And as I suggested last week, that we should have, again, like a quarterly report on the chief's proposal. And if we can, I don't know if it's too late, but I don't think it is for us to take a look. Maybe we should have a study session or something on what Darryl Cruz has submitted. It's not like he's a Johnny Come Lately. He's been working on this for 14 years or more. I've had him on several of my radio and television programs, giving information to the people. He spoke to the Ministry of Life and other organizations about these stops. He's been on this for some time. And I know myself, when I was president of Ministry of Alliance, I was very involved in the task force. And I know he sent more information than probably anybody. He probably did as much work as the people who were asked to be on the task force. So this is not a Johnny Come Lately thing. This gentleman has worked for years on this. And I've been involved for years, and I've gotten the information out to a lot of people. Because I didn't have to bring him up to speed. Because a lot of people know about a lot of information that I had been giving out to them over the years. So I don't know if my time is almost up. I had my eyes closed when I was talking. But anyway, that's what I have to say, and thank you very much. Maybe God did want me to speak. I thought I had put my hand down, but maybe somehow God put it back up because I wanted the council to really hear this. Is it up, my time up? Thank you.
Your time is up, and your hand is still up, too. Thank you. Next up is Alan Max Axelrod.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you put the clock up, please? In politics, it is of the utmost naivete for one to assume that the maneuvers they do have not been potentially anticipated or even seen somewhere else. So I rhetorically ask, what reasons did the city council of Urbana think that I had for mentioning that Bloomington City Council had moved on utility shut-offs? Let's start with the obvious one. To apply additional pressure that another municipal government, which had barely been talked to, is potentially moving faster than this municipal government on the issue of shut-offs. I say the following with the utmost benefit of doubt for the intellect of those whom I address. If those in power prioritized data and human rights over their image, then pressure would not have been needed in the first place on the issue of utility shut-offs and so many other issues. Now let's go to the less obvious. As expected, the city of Urbana misrepresented information to the Bloomington mayor. I tested both the city of Urbana and the city of Champaign on this matter. And not only was it that the city of Urbana did this, but it was telegraphed in council comments last week to boot. From the culturally pervasive anime Yu-Gi-Oh, you've activated my trap card. This city council has shown that when presented with data and facts, it could either not understand them or did not want to during a pandemic, rendering the majority of this body empirically wholly unqualified for public service. We need public servants who prioritize human rights over their image. And I will now be taking a more active role in ensuring that. The city council is not an authority on emergency powers. Not only has the city staff been the source of all the factual incorrect statements made during the No Hammer and Shut-Offs campaign, the city champagne staff have been factually correct about irrelevant details as their strategy instead, and neither have substantively addressed emergency powers. Neither of you will be the authority on this. The Champaign-Urbana Public Health District has all the facts. Their administrator has the power to act through another emergency body. And unlike the legal councils for both Champaign and Urbana, they are actively researching on the matter for over a week. Lying to the public during a pandemic about pandemic safety options is forever a part of the image of this council. To quote the Decatur Public School Systems candidate Kevin Ryan Collins Brown, who spoke during the Decatur Federation of Teaching Assistance rally after they were retaliated against during a strike, how is your image now? Good night.
Next up is Brian Dunn.
Hey, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Just want to say shout out Alan Axelrod, shout out Evelyn Underwood, shout out all the awesome people in our community who are, you know, doing the stuff, going to the community, firing, going door-to-door, risking their health during a pandemic to inform, to care, to let people know that they're not alone and that people are actually addressing these issues that affect their everyday lives. And yeah, it's just inspiring, you know, as someone who cares about this community, Urbana and Champaign, it's people like them that really make this place go around. And it's just, you know, I just want to come over here and just sing some praises, send some posy vibes, because the amount of good that they do is insurmountable. And they don't do it for an elected position. Well, you know, Evelyn's been elected positions before, but she would be doing it regardless. Alan would be doing it regardless. And I just wish that the people in the elected positions would spend less time trying to hamper what people are able to say during public comments, and more time listening to what the people are saying during public comments, and actually taking action on the information, which is very good and very well researched. And it could, you know, during a pandemic, it's not too much to say could save lives. So please, take considerations to limiting the role and responsibility of police seriously. Take the considerations of no hammer and shut-offs seriously, and do some work to make this community a better place. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Tracy Chong.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Tracy Chong from Urbana. Two weeks ago, Chief Sarah Finn finally admitted that Officer Ruff's handling of his rifle was a violation of policy during the Alea Lewis arrest, effectively destroying all public trust in Urbana Police Department internal reviews and external biased reviews hired by the city. The ineffective internal reviews by UPD are especially concerning since the excessive use of force during the earlier Lewis arrest is not an isolated incident. We just happen to be fortunate that the incident was captured on video by a stander and then brought to light. I'm going to describe an incident that UPD has tried to keep under wraps and hope that concerned members of the public and city council members will follow up and look into it. In January this year, CPRB board members reviewed a case from 2019 where a taser was deployed using a drive-stand method, which is prohibited under the UPD policy. Deputy Chief Richard Sells only showed about a minute of taser cam footage, which gave no context of the whole incident that took place. Watching the footage, board members wanted more video, such as squad camera video, to further examine the situation. However, Sells just could not explain why he could not produce the squad cam video, nor answer if there was any more footage available from other officers on scene. He then promised to look into it and produce additional footage. Of course, this promise was conveniently forgotten until I brought it up over and over again at each CPRB meeting. Finally, at the last CPRB meeting, a short video from the squad car cam was, from the squad car cam was produced. This video, which Deputy Chief Sells had kept under wraps, shows an individual approaching two police officers. He was concerned about his girlfriend, who was just arrested for an active warrant. At this point, the officers had begin, had been called regarding a domestic dispute. This guy was not wanted or suspected of any crime, and there was no report of a weapon. The next thing that happens is that the officer reaches out and pushes the guy, and the guy responds by trying to block the officer's hand. Within a couple of seconds, with no warning from the officers, this guy is tased as he's backing away with his arms up in the air. After the first tasing, he's tackled by four police officers, pinned to the ground, and he stays again with the prohibited drive-stand method. Interestingly, Sells reported to CPRB that this guy had shown the officers to justify that the tasing was according to policy because the guy was aggressive. Does this sound familiar? The video shows otherwise, making it a violation of policy to even use the taser in this case. This video also shows a violation of UPD taser policy, a violation of UPD taser policy whereby officers are required to give verbal warnings and give reasonable opportunity to comply. Again, this did not happen. Then, while the unarmed guy was pinned down by four police officers, a drive-stand, which is prohibited by UPD policy, was performed. When newly appointed CPRB board member Tony Allegretti saw this footage, he immediately raised up all these points, which I just brought up. And members of the public watching it, we all had the same thoughts. I don't know what will happen next, but these type of incidents will keep on happening over and over again. Seeing the broken review process and how Urbana is moving in the opposite direction of transparency and accountability, most of these cases will just remain hidden from the public until the next incident is recorded or God forbid, someone dies, someone is killed or murdered by police officers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is James Corbin.
Okay. Thank you all. Thank you, city council, for allowing me to speak. Yes, my name is James Corbin, and I live in Urbana. And I work with First Followers as a mentor and a drop-in center. We run the drop-in center at Outreach Specialists. I'm just speaking today, just starting my day today, and some of the things that we've been facing as a reentry group. One of the things, just starting my day today, I started off at 7:00 AM and, you know, got ready, and by 8:00, I was already getting phone calls from individuals within the community looking for either housing, work, or other services such as food or help with connecting with other services. Now, this has been consistent ever since we have done outreach, flyer outreach mailing campaign, which is, which was very successful, and we only reached out to those individuals who have recently been released from probation. So since then, our organization has been inundated with calls coming from these individuals looking for such services, housing and emergency housing, as well as clothes, other items. Now, we have been providing a few of these things, such as backpacks, with backpacks with hygiene, COVID tests, well as a 14-day quarantine stay in local hotels, smartphone, as well as $200 cash card so they could go shop. And that's, that was the result of city of Champaign providing these funds for our organization to provide these services. So, and as we are a small group, a small organization, and our team works hard, we work very hard, all our guys out. But we would like to see if, or we request, maybe if Urbana could probably match these same type of services and help provide a backpack, maybe a help with the hotel in order so that we could better serve our constituents within, you know, Urbana and Champaign. One of the biggest issues I keep running into is housing. The voucher that Champaign has offered pays three months. It pays up to three months plus the security deposit. And that's great, but finding housing in Champaign for someone who has a criminal background is still hard, or, you know, it has its issues. So housing is more available in Urbana, but we don't have that type voucher offered for Urbana. So it would be great if we could have that service offered or that resource actually in Urbana as well as Champaign, and then these two cities could kind of, you know, be in tandem with each other, and we could better serve the people of both cities. That's all I would really like to say at this time. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, James. I will, I will add that the social service funding for this year was, First Followers were included in social service grants, and we'll follow up to make sure that that money has actually been released. And in the meantime, people can call 211 for assistance, especially during COVID. That's a good place to start. That's a general number, but people can be, you know, from there can determine what services are needed. But we'll follow up and make sure the social service funding grant that was approved for First Followers has been released. And that was, I don't remember offhand, but it was, I believe, tens of thousands of dollars. So, but thank you. Next up is Christopher Hansen.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Christopher Hansen. I've lived in Urbana for 18 years. Last week's meeting was rather impressive, silencing members of the public for expressing their opinions. I mean, we, haven't you gone to the, to the point of a comedy now? I mean, what are you guys thinking? It was interesting, when you guys switched between the open and closed meetings to hear Sharice Hersi drop the F-bomb a few times. It's interesting that you allow that kind of thing, and then you'll mute people for expressing their opinions or mentioning elected officials. Do, do you guys have any concept for how far you've gone in the direction of being completely corrupt? I mean, actually, actually shutting down public speech at open meetings. You went through this whole public records scheme, or you tried to defraud the public of thousands of dollars for, for public records, for police records? I mean, do you have any idea where you've put yourselves? How much you've normalized corruption in Urbana? Or are you just completely unaware? So anyways, now you're facing a lawsuit for your Open Meetings Act violations, and that's going to be something you have to deal with now, and I would surely like to see any of you comment on that. And the lawsuit is posted on checkcu.org if anyone wants to read it. And also, the, the arrest that Tracy Chong described earlier is documented also with video on checkcu.org, if anyone wants to see that. So I'll go into my issues here. I was really concerned about the police listening sessions that happened a week or two ago. You know, we have our, our new community engagement coordinator, Lamont Peppers, and his title is Community Engagement Coordinator. I couldn't help notice that no youth, zero youth wanted to participate in that listening session, and I wonder if it had anything to do with the really intimidating, heavy-handed rules that Mr. Peppers put forth at that listening session. And then Lamont Peppers muted someone at the second listening session for mentioning the Alea Lewis arrest review. And I'm wondering, calling them listening sessions, it, it's just, it's just so absurd. Now you, you have to, whenever you reference those sessions, you need to do it, keeping in mind that you didn't actually get to hear from the community, because you told them, we don't want to hear certain things that you have to say. And if they said it, you muted them. So I don't know what you thought you were going to get out of that. I'm wondering, how many of you watched the human rights hearing on November 10th? I know Bill Brown watched it. I emailed him about it, but he didn't write me back. The city attorney, James Simon, is, in my opinion, just a terrible embarrassment to the city of Urbana. As far as I can tell, he has no sense of ethics. And Mayor Marlin has assigned him to be the Ethics Officer for the city of Urbana. What a ridiculous situation we've gotten ourselves into. By the way, did the city council intend that the boards and commissions would not be able to vote to extend speaking time at meetings? Because that's what James Simon tried to tell the Human Relations Commission at that meeting. Also, I noticed that the meeting rules for that meeting indicated four minutes of speaking time, but since that was a physical, physical meeting, it should have been five minutes, right? Or did you guys not think of hybrid meetings? Maybe you didn't think at all. Simon claimed at that hearing that the city of Urbana and its agents are allowed to discriminate against both residents and its own employees. And this is one of the most morally hazardous postures that I've seen anyone take in the city of Urbana. I'm flabbergasted that this person, James Simon, the city's Ethics Officer, is making this claim. And it's hard to think of a more ethically backwards individual to be, to be putting in that position of, of Human Relations Officer. It's just constantly lying, lying and conspiring to commit illegal acts in regards to fraud.
Mr. Hansen, Mr. Hansen, that's your interpretation. Please stick to the facts.
I'm telling you.
Time is up. Thank you very much. Ms. Wilken is next.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Try and follow all those. My name's Grace Wilken. I'm an Urbana resident. And I have a few questions and comments for tonight. I was wondering about the One Door program, because in the police listening sessions that were not very open listening, definitely, there was mention of the One Door program and that it would be presented to council soon with some updates. So I'm just wondering what's going on with that, and when we'll hear more. Another question was about the comprehensive plan and the same kind of deal. What's that status? And when will there be a time for public input on both of these issues, One Door and the comprehensive plan? And also, when will there be a time and space for city commissions input? And I'm just wondering generally how we utilize these city commissions. I'm on one, and it doesn't seem to be very connected to the council, the city. It just seems like if the city has this whole group of experts in different areas and wants to have them volunteer and be consulted, that they could be a little more utilized. So I'm just wondering how that all plays in, and when the public and the commissions can have a chance for input on One Door and Comprehensive Plan. I think we need accountability in our city, and we need more diverse input on these kinds of planning issues. We also need to address the clear racism and other issues in Urbana, big issues with homelessness. There's definitely not enough services. A lot of people are doing really great work, some within institutions and a lot on their own personal time or with nonprofits, and there's still so much more that needs to be done. Thanks for listening to Tiger, or James Corbin, about First Followers and the essential services that they provide in the community. And yes, please do follow up on that grant and at least match Champaign's contributions. And I encourage you to continue to look into this and work towards a point where it doesn't depend on people doing it out of the goodness of the heart and sacrificing their own resources to where this can come out of the city resources and the money and all of the resources that we already have in the city. Please address the racism in our policing, schools, criminal and justice system. I also wanted to go back to last meeting, I believe that was last week, on the reports of traffic stops and the ridiculousness that anyone would think that police can't be racist in the dark. We have a whole long history of sundown towns and racial violence after dark. Police can see drivers, they can run plates and they can see descriptions like blue versus brown eyes. They can patrol certain neighborhoods, they can stop certain types of cars. There are so many ways to be racist after dark. So I thought that was an interesting thing that. Clearly doesn't make any sense. So please overall reflect on the values, the funding and transparency of the city, that this is not the Urbana that the community typically thinks of or that we want. We also need to address issues with utility shut offs and general economic hardships. Because of COVID-19, but also just in general. And also about the tree grant that is on the agenda tonight. I think that's a great thing, great work to Scott and the city for getting this grant. It's fifty trees, which is definitely a step, but it's definitely not the end result. So please continue to push that area and don't stop there. That's all. Bye.
Thank you. Um. Next up is Bo Barber.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, so hi, this is Bo Barber from Vill de Bog in Illinois. Um. I wasn't going to comment tonight, but after learning of some recent developments in regards to what the council decided to do. In regards to approaching Bloomington City Council. I'll be honest, I'm very frustrated and incredibly disappointed. Um. I've been sending, you know, I've. I've sent people out to canvas or, you know, send or post flyers places so people could know what resources to go to if they. Were at risk of being disconnected or had they had been disconnected in the middle of a pandemic. I'm my my organizers know what they're doing. They know the risks involved. They are being as incredibly responsible as possible. But there's this, this is still a health risk they are taking for themselves and I commend them for that. These people care about the community. And are putting their necks out for people in their community because they care. So when, so when I hear this. That this is actions have been taken to undermine us going to Bloomington City Council. I'm frustrated. What am I supposed to do? This is, uh, I told you this in the last city council meeting, y'all. I'm fighting a losing battle here. And luckily through this efforts that we've been working on for months. No, no, thank, no thanks to a lot of other people in power except for CUPHD. Um. We've managed to push Ameren to try and hopefully, I don't trust them still. I wouldn't trust them with my wallet. Um. To hopefully start with that moratorium two weeks early, which is still a mean tested thing. It's not going to solve all our problems. It's going to help a heck of a lot, but it's not going to solve all our problems. And so to have this just happen, I mean, what do you want us to, what are we supposed to do? Do your job for you? I'm angry. I I expect better out of this. You're our elected representatives. I mean, I don't know, I live outside in the rural part of this county, but if several hundred people get sick in Urbana. My family back home with my two plus six year old parents are at a higher risk because this stuff spreads like a wildfire. I get, I I care and it's not just my family that I care about. I love them dearly and would do anything for them, but this is everybody in this community. These are all my friends who are knocking on the doors, all the organizers, all the people who are working at CUPHD, Cunningham Township to try and get this done. I'm tired of it. I don't want to do it anymore. I I'll do it because I need to, but I have put the rest of my life on hold. I put my research on hold. I put my work on hold. I am falling behind in my, I'm falling behind in my responsibilities as a TA to make sure this gets done. So I cannot believe. That y'all went behind our backs to try and this way Bloomington City Council and trying to just. I don't know. I'm frustrated. I hope y'all can do better. Minus Jared, because Jared's the one person that I really approve of and he does, he listens to the people, he cares about his constituents. And he talks to, he talks to us, he talks to everybody. He's making sure people are okay. Y'all need to step up to the plate. Y'all need to get this, y'all need to start doing what you need to do for your constituents. I do not care for any legal opinion that James Simons thinks he has. That's the only thing I'm going to say about any city staff. Unless he brings up the Emergency Disaster Services Agency that Alan Hin mentioned and cites it in anything in opposition, anything previous that is a moot point that he makes. I am done. Okay, we're going to do this without you. We're going to do this in spite of you. We're going to save these people. We're gonna, we're gonna do what we can to try and save everybody, even if it's a failing battle here. No, because we're going to try. So what are you going to do? That's all I'm going to say. Thank you. Have a good night.
I'd like to address this. There seems to be a serious misunderstanding here. I'm not, I can't speak for any individual council member. But no one from the city of Urbana undermined any efforts regarding utility shut offs with the city of Bloomington. I did call the mayor of Bloomington because it was represented at one of the meetings that the. Bloomington was considering an ordinance for a local ordinance to prevent utility shut offs. The mayor told me that no, they were not, that their research had showed pretty much what our legal research had showed, that we didn't have the local authority to do so. But Mayor Renner did say that the. That they were impressed with the resolution that was passed by the Urbana City Council and he thought maybe that the Bloomington City Council would be passing a similar resolution. We have supported and worked alongside with CUPHD, with Cunningham Township, with Regional Plant Commission, with the Laiheep folks. I've been in phone conversations with the people from Ameren, you know, constantly regarding utility shut offs. So I'm not sure why people would believe or or. Would believe that anything we were doing here was to undermine your efforts statewide. We appreciate the pressure and the energy and devotion that people have put into this and we're working with you. So there's nothing that we did from from my office with the city of Bloomington to warrant the conclusions that you've come to. So at this point, I don't see any other hands raised. And I can go into more detail as far as what we have been doing the last week with related to these utility shut offs under reports of officers. All right, we go to unfinished business. There is none. I'm going to go on to. Reports of standing committee. Committee of the Hall, Dennis Roberts.
Sure. So coming from the, from the committee of the hall, we have several resolutions and ordinances. The first being Resolution Number 2020-11-059R. A resolution estimating the tax levy for the fiscal year 2020 to 2021. As proposed by Elizabeth Hannah in the tax in our finance department. And for the committee, I move its approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Ms. Hershey? Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
Okay. Next is Resolution Number 2020-11-060R. A resolution accepting a grant from the Lumpkin Family Foundation. To study street trees and plant trees. This has to do with. The urban forest and hot hot spots within the urban forest that might be mitigated by tree shade planting of trees. So for the committee, I move approval.
I'll second.
Any discussion? That was moved by Dennis, seconded by Mary Alice. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Miller, okay.
Okay, that motion passes.
Okay. The next is an ordinance number 2020-11-066. An ordinance approving a right of way license agreement. With the Champagne Urbana Mass Transit District. And the committee agreed to it and so therefore I I make a motion that we accept it with approval.
I'll second it.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Bill Colebrook. Any discussion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes. Next up is ordinance number 2020-11-067.
Yes. So that that is an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter Three. Section three dash forty-three. Increasing the number of Class R and T dash one liquor licenses for. Bald Dorados, Porqueta and Sicilian Sausage. Located at 300 South Broadway Avenue, Urbana, at Stanley Quin Square Mall. And that was presented by the mayor and for the committee, I move approval.
I'll second that.
Moved by Dennis, seconded by Jared. Is there any discussion? Okay, will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Wu?
Yes.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Colebrook?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
That motion passes.
That includes the committee of the halls' real work.
Great, thank you. Uh, reports of special committees. Okay, we have none. Reports of officers. Carol.
I have a couple of things to share with you tonight. The first is just to announce that the. Operating hours at the Landscape Recycling Center are being curtailed a bit to help us. Manage some, some of the issues related to the COVID-19. So starting today, the operating hours at the LRC where we're open to the public. Will be eight AM to three PM, Monday through Friday. So we will not be open on Saturdays. Until spring at the earliest and we'll reevaluate it at that time. A press release to that effect went out today. Um, and we're very excited with the fact that we've been approved by the Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity for the $500,000. Grant that we that we requested that will help us fund a series of smaller grants here in Urbana. Called the Cures ES, the Economic Support Grants. And the details are on the website, but the the little summary that I'll give is that the maximum amount of the grant for any individual business in Urbana is $20,000. And it's meant to reimburse eligible businesses for expenses that they have incurred over and above normal operating expenses to help. Deal with adjustments that they've made to deal with the virus. And so those would include anything like. If they had installed any kind of air filtration or any kind of Plexiglas divider, any sanitation, additional sanitation. Equipment that they had bought, tents, outdoor heaters and things like that. And so the deadline to apply, we've been, we have been. Communicating with our businesses that they should start collecting those receipts. Even before we knew we had been awarded this money. But the the deadline to apply for the grant is December 11th and like I said, the the detailed information is is on the website. And then I would also just let you know that the. The check to the Urbana Business Association that you all approved. Last week has been delivered. So that's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Carol? Okay. Any other staff report? I know I have one and Chief Seraphin has one. I wasn't aware of any others. Okay, I'll, I'll. I'll provide some information on a couple of topics. The first is continued information about the utility disconnection issue. Again, I appreciate the really heroic efforts of members of the public to to get this issue out in front of the entire state. And as a result of, I believe, that effort to a large extent. Ameren announced they were suspending utility disconnections last week. And we followed up with a phone call with Carly Combest at Ameren. I I was on the phone call along with. A representative from the Champagne Neighborhood Services Staff. Mayor Finan wasn't able to join. So based from that phone call, we learned according to Ameren, that of the hundreds of disconnection notices sent from basically mid-September to mid-November. There are less than a hundred households remaining disconnected in Champagne and Urbana zip codes. And that includes the rural Champagne, Urbana addresses as well as those within corporate city limits. It's not known whether all of those disconnections were due to non-payment. There may have been some other reasons, but they will be followed up on. So Ameren currently has written agreements with the Champagne, Urbana Public Health District. And with the Regional Planning Commission who administers the Laiheep funds in this areas. Per that agreement, they can share names, addresses and contact information of the disconnected households. They are not allowed to share it directly with the cities, but these are both entities with whom we work very closely. So we we emphasize to Ameren to ask them to share the names of disconnected households, all the households with Laiheep regardless of income. So that these households could be contacted to determine if number one, they really intended to disconnect. Number two, if they needed assistance to reconnect and what what they needed in order to get reconnected and what kind of help they might need. The Lisa Benson from the RPC is pulling together a working group that will include members from the cities of Champagne and Urbana, various social service providers and the townships. To coordinate outreach to disconnected households. And coordinate assistance for both addressing past due balances and more, as importantly, getting a plan in place. To work with people to avert another crisis next spring when the suspension of disconnection ends and that's due to end March 31st. You know, we, we, this pandemic won't be over. It's quite possibly we could be worse than we are now and we need to be prepared for. You know, what comes in the months ahead, but this working group, we really do need a coordinated effort among the. The government entities, the social service providers. And the administrators of Laiheep and the townships. So for the city of Urbana, Sheila Dodd and Alyssa JJ will represent the city on this working group. So I think this is a really significant step. In getting a handle on this crisis. In the meantime. Customers are also being encouraged, you know, if they're running into trouble with bills, to always call the company, the utility company, whether it's the power company or the water company. To inform that you're experiencing financial hardship related to COVID. And that phone, that's that phone call needs to be made and those numbers have been provided for Ameren. It's 1-800-755-5000. For Illinois American Water, it's 1-800-422-2782. But again, I want people to know that the city is working very closely with the township, with the Public Health District, with the city of Champagne. And with the Regional Planning Commission to coordinate assistance to people who need it. And we'll keep, I've been keeping council posted as, you know, as we reach. As there's information to provide. Secondly. This is, I wanted to share information related to a especially significant. Arrest and especially significant work that was done by some members of the Urbana Police Department. This topic may be triggering for some people, so I'm going to let you know that it's related to sex trafficking in. The Champagne County. So if if this is going to be upsetting to people, please step away from the computer, please mute for a couple of minutes so that you can avoid. Hearing, but I wanted to let you know that. A man was arrested in. a man was arrested in 2018 and has, and then recently entered pleas of guilty to sex trafficking young women in central Illinois. And this was going on from 2016 to May of 2018. According to the documents in 2017 and 2018, this individual who's from Springfield resided in a motel in Champaign, Illinois. He exploited the vulnerabilities of young women, including their drug addictions and homelessness, and forced them to engage in commercial sex acts. He recruited young women from Champaign, Sangamon, Peoria Counties who often were dealing with the effects of heroin and crack cocaine addictions. He used the website back page, which was seized by the Department of Justice in April 2018 to advertise commercial sex acts to be performed by the women he recruited. He used violence and threats of violence to force the women to engage in sex with men. To coerce women into continued sex trafficking, Stapleton supplied them with drugs and threatened to send women into withdrawal sickness by withholding drugs. The reason I'm sharing this with you is if you don't believe it can happen here, it does and it was. The charges that were brought against him were the result of an intense effort of which several people in the Urbana Police Department were part of. It was also an investigation in coordination with US Immigration and Customs Enforcement, Homeland Security, Urbana Police Department, Champaign County Sheriff's Office, Illinois State Police Forensics Lab, Champaign Police Department with cooperation from the Champaign County State's Attorney, Julia Reitz. There was a huge group of people working to bring this case to, to to the end, positive end that it resulted in. And I want to recognize specifically from the Urbana Police Department, Detective Adam Marcott, Sergeant Betsy Alfonso, Sergeant Mike Cervantes and Sergeant Tim McNutt, who were all given an award by Homeland Security on Friday here at the city building for their work. They developed the evidence, they pursued this to the end and were an enormous part of the successful outcome of this case. So this individual pled guilty. He is awaiting sentencing and he faces 30 years to life in prison for his crimes. And there are at least six, I believe it's six young women who have their lives back or at least have an opportunity. So I wanted to thank and recognize the work of these officers and just let you know that they were specifically recognized for their efforts by federal law enforcement. That's all I have for tonight.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I have a couple of items I wanted to brief the council on tonight. The first one is the, we have entered into a school resource officer billing adjustment with the school district. After some, some conversations earlier in September with the school district staff and some in-house review and then the, the timing of an officer who actually left our agency. It was after all those variables were considered that we were able to, at this point, reach out to the school district and agree with a, a plan to provide some financial relief during this time. And so for the current quarter that we're in right now, October, November, December, we will be charging $22,600 less than we normally would be for the, this time. And we will be, at this point, we anticipate doing that. We're going to do that in this next, I guess, upcoming quarter, January, February and March. As we move into March, we've agreed to work with the school district and to see how things are progressing, where the, where we are with students and staffing and vaccinations and COVID and those kinds of things. So we believe this is in, in the spirit of the resolution that was passed earlier. So I wanted to inform the council that indeed we're not, everything is, we're, the, the level of service as best we can is, is the same, but because of the vacancy, we have been able to assist the school district in that way. So we wanted to make sure that the council was aware of, of that effort. A little more specifically with regards to the actual police department here and the, the city building. As everyone knows, COVID affects everyone and currently we are battling some of that with our front desk staff and quarantines and some of those issues. Now, we have a very small number of staff who work the front desk. And so when we have these issues arise, we have to sort of move pieces around. Currently, as a result of some issues that bubbled up over the weekend, we're using a patchwork of police officers and some other administrative staff to make sure our front desk does stay open. But it normally is open from 7:00 AM until 11:00 PM. At least for the foreseeable future, as we try to maneuver through this, it will be 7:00 AM until 7:00 PM. Now the vest, all three vestibules at the city building are open and the phones will be, continue to be answered, so we can still get officers here. There's still 24/7 police. But with regards to some of our staffing at the front desk and some of our civilian support, as we work our way through some of these quarantine days, we will be working with bare bones staff. So I just wanted the, the council to know that the hours indeed have been, have been reduced.
Now, up to that, I will add, this is a reflection of the era we're in now, which is sustained community spread. And it is impacting city staff as well. So we have some positive cases. We have people quarantined in addition in every single department. So people need to understand. And, and we're beginning to see impact on services, impact in our ability to have timely turnaround on things. And people have to understand this is what we've been working all year to try to avoid, but it's here. So we're going to try as best we can to keep things, essential services going. And it may just take longer to, to, to do it, but we will. And we're trying to keep our city staff as well as their families and everyone in the community healthy. So we'll keep you posted on any significant changes in services and hours, but those, that's what, that's what we're dealing with this week. And, and I cannot, you know, I, I know I sound like a broken record, but, but we cannot stress it enough that, that we are entering and in the most dangerous phase of this pandemic because of the widespread presence of the virus in the community. And with the holiday season and people leaving town, coming back, people traveling, despite all the pleas to stay home and stay apart, we will, we'll be seeing in a wider, wider spread and probably even more cases. So, so we're working from a city standpoint and with our partners focused on still trying to reduce the spread, but also trying to improve the turnaround time at the testing site at Marketplace since the tests were early in the, early in the system, the tests done at Marketplace were processed at the Carl Hospital lab. So we got a very quick turnaround, you know, 24 hours, 48 hours. The Illinois Department of Public Health State moved the analysis of those Marketplace tests to a lab in Pekin. And from what we're hearing now, the turnaround time is more like five, four to five days, sometimes longer than that. So it really makes those results pretty much worthless in terms of contact tracing. So we're working hard with partners to find an alternative to that, which so far we haven't been able to do so. And the other issue we're starting to plan for will be for distribution of the vaccine, which is a fairly complicated logistical challenge, but it's going to have to be done. And that's, that's the other big task ahead of us at the moment. So. So there we are. So I hope you have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Share your meal from a distance, deliver it to people who don't have someone cooking for them. But please stay apart and I please ask people to care enough about the community to stay apart so that we're all together for next Thanksgiving. And last reminder, next Monday is the fifth Monday of the month and we do not have a meeting. So we'll see you in two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you. And good night.
Are we adjourned?
Oh, yes. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.